I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. I think I've spoke to everybody that's here today. We're glad you're here. Let's tell the gentleman in the back, this is everybody's room. Everybody is welcome here, and we're glad to have you. We usually start our meeting, and this is the meeting of the Wilkes County Commissioners for April 3rd, 2018. We usually start the meeting with an invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner David Gamble will lead us in the invocation. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody would please stand.
Mr. President, if you're going to follow the Lord, it's just an honor and privilege to come to you today. Thank you for all your blessings. Thank you for your guidance. And just thank you for the opportunity to serve this county. And as such, you can continue to lead us and guide us in the direction to be pleasing. And all these things we have seen Jesus say.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is almost always the approval of the minutes. We've actually got two sets this time because we had a out-of-schedule meeting during March. So, Tony, do we need to approve these separately?
Yes, we do.
These minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, first of all, we'll need a motion for the minutes from the meeting held on March 9th.
So moved.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, that takes care of March 9th. Then we have minutes from the meeting that was held on March 20th.
Motion.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? None? All in favor, raise your... Okay, that gets the minutes taken care of. Next, we've got a resolution. The High Country Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. That's a mouthful. Okay, we've got Nathan Slaughter. He's Hazard Mitigation Department Manager, ESP Associates, and our very own Suzanne Hamby, who's our emergency coordinator. Are both of you going to come up, or is John going to... John's going to handle... John, are you handling those?
No, they're here.
Yeah, okay, come on up. Yeah.
Good morning.
Okay.
You left one.
Yeah, Nathan, you're going to come up by yourselves.
She says she's going to throw me up here to the front.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
Good morning. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak. The regional hazard mitigation plan is a requirement by FEMA in order for Wilkes County and the municipalities in the county to remain eligible for certain types of disaster recovery funding. That's both state and federal disaster recovery funds. The plan was put together over the course of about a year, included participation from four counties, Allegheny, Wilkes, Watauga, and Ash. All the other counties and all the other municipalities have adopted the plan. By adopting the plan, Wilkes will be covered for a period of five years to ensure that they continue to be eligible for that FEMA disaster recovery money. And I'm here to answer any question you guys might have.
Board members, do you have any questions about this?
Comment, maybe? Go ahead. It's my understanding the head of FEMA is now... he was from Granite Falls.
Yes, sir.
And outstate, right?
Brock Long, yes, sir.
Yep. Do you know him?
I do. He's a good guy, a real good guy.
Didn't he speak at the national conference? Yeah.
And it sort of just shot me.
Yeah.
Upstate.
Yeah, and he's a real big proponent of this hazard mitigation funding. He's really helped increase the funding that's out there that might come into the county to help out with certain projects.
Is he a newly appointed?
I think he rose through the ranks.
You probably know more, but my understanding, he came in right when the hurricanes and the floods in Texas.
Right before all that, yes, sir. He was director... he was the State Director of Emergency Management for the state of Alabama for about a year and a half. And then he did some consulting work, and then went from there straight to director.
I think the perception was that as many disasters as were, it was quite well handled. He spoke well. When I saw him, you know, during the crisis, in that position, it seemed to me like he was well qualified.
He really did. He did a great job considering the amount of stuff that was thrown at him in his first year.
Maybe he won't get fired.
No comment. Who knows?
No comment.
Who knows? Okay.
So what we need... what we're requesting is just that there's a resolution that signifies you guys have adopted the plan, and that, like I said, that'll get turned into FEMA, and that'll help ensure that the county remains eligible for the recovery money that's associated with the plan.
And the two towns have already passed this?
I believe so, yes.
The three towns, I guess.
Yeah, we got all three of them.
Yeah, I didn't mean to leave round out them, so.
That's right.
Chairman, if I could just for a second. Nathan's right.
Well, Tony, you sure can. You sure can.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was going to point out how much work's gone into this. If you look at paragraph, what, maybe the next slide, you see you all... Nathan's having to appear in front of the approval from the plan. Suzanne's done a lot of work on it. Nathan's done a lot of work on it. Lots going into it. Now, we're one of the last to approve it, I think, or...
Right, right. I mean, over the course of a couple of months, you know, it takes a little while for everybody to get through it, but that's...
We didn't want to wait for the three towns that approved in Wilkes County in May.
Right.
And I've got the version of the plan that Tony reviewed and marked up, so we took care of some comments that he had, and we met with him about a couple of weeks ago just to address any concerns he might have had.
Of course.
Think we're in good shape.
Yeah. Did we have one that's expired or going to expire? Or is it time to renew it?
Yes, sir. About five years ago, I came before you, before the board, and you guys adopted the previous version of the plan. It doesn't expire until May, so you're covered by that plan until such time.
Good time.
Yeah, exactly. Just about right on time.
This is a big part of the high country, the municipalities and counties that are involved. Well, we've certainly had our fair share of natural hazards.
Yes, sir.
In the last couple of years, so we... I think we've become more aware of how much we need to be prepared for emergencies in the county, including the tornado we had recently, which was an eye-opener.
Yes, sir. And that event didn't qualify as what they call a presidential disaster declaration. It became a state declared disaster, and that's another... you know, this plan is tied to that as well. Had you not adopted the plan five years ago that covers you for that, you probably would have been scrambling to adopt it, so you would ensure that the town got money for that event as well.
Any other comments, questions from the board before we... We don't need to read this into the record, do we? Or...
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Jim, to approve the resolution to adopt the High Country Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Got a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. By our Fire Commissioner, Greg Mott. Any additional discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, that resolution passes.
All right.
Thank you. We'll see you in five more years.
All right, thank you.
Or you can come back sooner if you'd like to visit. That's fine. Okay, well, we've got item F on the agenda, and this is kind of a follow-up from our last meeting. We had some public comment from the library, from the... I guess who's the chairman of the...
Yeah.
You see the chairman of the board?
Oh, yeah, he was chairman, yes.
Thank you. Yeah, Rick. Yeah, Rick. We've got Jane Blackburn, who's the director, regional director, and then our own Director Julia Turpin is with us. So, Jane, I know you had emailed, and we talked about getting in here and doing a presentation on the library, and so that's great. We're here, we're all ears and eyes.
And eyes.
Yeah.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me come today and bring your ears and ask for a boatload of money just to give away the bottom line, which you probably already knew. I wanted just to very briefly review what a regional library is. We signed... Ash Watauga and Wilkes signed an interlocal agreement in 1962 to form the region. If you want to look up the administrative code with all the rules, I've got the reference to that, and just wanted to mention or to quote from one part of that interlocal agreement. And they're all different. Any regional library will have an agreement that may be slightly different, as long as it meets the code, they might be different. But ours stipulated that the budgets reached county will include an agreed-upon amount paid by each member county for materials, salaries, and operating expenses. We will get back to that. So why have a regional library rather than just a library in your county department? Just as a note, our state has 12 regional systems across the state covering 42 counties, so it's almost half. Half of our counties have decided to be part of a regional library system rather than operate their own. Fifty-eight do operate their own libraries within their county as a county department. Primary reason to have a regional library is to save money, which is a great idea. You do that by economies of scale, and you do that by putting the administration of your library off on someone else, which would be me and my staff. Economies of scale in our system, for example, would be our Overdrive, which is the service that provides eBooks, our free eBooks. The regional budget pays the platform or to have the service. Each of our three counties puts in money to buy the books, but all of our residents can have access to the books, so we're sharing those resources. Our computer hardware and software, we negotiated better prices because we are taking care of 200 computers across the region rather than a smaller amount in one library. Our internet access fees are negotiated across the region, so we save money doing that. The administrative services that we supply, my finance and personnel officer does all the receivables, all the payables, all the payroll, and all that lowly personnel-complicated stuff for the region so that your folks in your counties don't deal with that with our staff. Our information technology guy takes care of managing and planning and repairing and installing all the technology to save your IT staff from doing that. And then, I guess, I sit in my office and eat bonbons while everybody else works, manage across the region, do planning, do budget work. The next slide is just some numbers from the region from the last fiscal year. Public libraries are still in demand and still valuable, and people in the high country, in our three counties, use them. We had nearly five items viewed or checked out per capita across the region. Thirty-two, 33,000 people came to programs in our libraries, almost 100,000 computer uses, and 423,000 bodies through our doors in our five library sites. So, we stay busy. People use the library. This is just a budget shot of the regionals' budget. We don't operate with one budget. We operate with a state aid budget and four county budgets. All of your money stays in your county, so we have separate budgets. But taken as a whole, at the end of January, we were running about a $2.5 million budget. So our revenues primarily come from the counties, from state aid, and then from an assortment of other sources. Our expenditures, not surprisingly, across the region, 71% is personnel. This is, you know, a common percentage in a business. We pay for operations, materials, programming, technology out of that budget. And I will say that in the 56 years of the region's existence, we've had a clean audit every time. We run a tight ship and manage our money really well. This is probably what you want to look at, though, which is the budget for the Wilkes County libraries. The current revenues, I think this was the end of February, maybe, are running at $761,000. Most of that money, 80% of it, is coming from the county. Thank you very much. We get tiny bit from North Wilkesboro. We have individual and group gifts and donations. We bring in fines and fees every year. We look for grants. We use our fund balance, so we make up the difference in what we're spending and what we get from you from these other sources. The expenditures, again, primarily for staff. 73% of our money that we take in, and this is just the county money, goes toward our personnel, salaries, and associated costs. And then we spend money on materials, programming, and operations. So that's all background. Turning our attention to the reason I'm really here today. We had a compensation classification study done this past year by a company called Springstead Incorporated, which works with government organizations to do planning and to do budgeting and to do pay and classification studies. Before we did that, I just sat down and did a SWOT analysis. I had to make my library degree, you know, come into play somehow here in my management. The strengths in our region and in this county are our people. They are creative, and they are hardworking, which means that the main weakness that threatens the region and our libraries here in the county is that we have low salaries and high turnover rate. Now, I will tell you, the turnover rate is in the part-time folks, but more than half of our staff are part-time people because we really can't afford to have everybody full-time with full benefits. But we do have a high turnover rate. So this is our opportunity to bring our salaries up to a fair and competitive level. I am talking to you today. I'll be talking with the Ash County Commissioners and the Watauga County Commissioners in two weeks. Several of the Commissioners from the three counties came to that meeting in March and have heard this, talked with the county manager, so everyone kind of knows what this request is going to be, and this is the time to do it. If we don't do it, we will have a decreasing ability over the years to continue to give the kind of service we do now. Right now, there are a lot of our full-time positions held by folks who grew up here and live here and love it and are going to stay. My fear is that as they age and retire, and as people are moving around more, people will be moving to where money is, and right now, that would not be our libraries. So I'm afraid that if we can't do better with our pay, we won't keep the kind of people we need to keep. So what we wanted to achieve with the study is to retain... keep who we have, because we've got good people, and attract new people when we need them, to ensure internal equity, because we are spread out over three counties, and to be competitive when we need to hire folks. The methodology that Springstead used, I won't go into all the details that they gave us. They did... they collected data. What do our jobs entail? How much do we pay our people? And then they collected that similar data from other libraries so they could compare us to someone else, have some comparison there. Then they developed for us a classification system, how our jobs ought to be ranked in relation to each other and across the region, and then they developed a new pay scale for us. We are now at step five, hoping to implement the new pay scale. The main study's finding is that our salary levels are significantly lower than other comparable regional and county library systems, and that our turnover rate is high. This is the eight regional or county library systems that were contacted to provide the salary information to compare us against. One, two, three, four of them are other regional systems, and two are county systems, three are county systems. So this is one of the pages of this humongous long report that we got from them that I did not burden you with, and it's a lot of information on one page. What I want to point out are three jobs that we have. They're important jobs in our system. What our minimum starting pay for that position is, and what the minimum average pay from those other libraries is. So on the first arrow on the left down the side, those are the job titles. The adult services specialist, when we hire someone, we try to start at the bottom of the range because we're always looking to save a little money. If we lose someone, we go back and start over. We would pay an adult service specialist, someone with a two- or four-year degree, $18,000 in a full-time job. If this person went to one of the other libraries or many other libraries across the state, they'd start at $25,000. Our youth service librarian position is a four-year degree and a two-year professional degree. We start that person at $27,000, which I think is probably lower than a teacher's pay. If they were to find a job somewhere else, they could get around 40 just to start. And our county librarian, if we were starting all over and hiring new, the bottom, the minimum pay for that job would be $34,000, whereas this person elsewhere would start at 45. That's a big difference, and that concerns me. Now, I did a seat-of-the-pants thing. One of the other county managers said, "Well, you could have just gone to the School of Government Survey and, you know, looked at their... the survey they do every year in library positions." So I did. I looked at the School of Government Survey numbers. They surveyed four, I think, different library positions. The state library also does a survey every year and gets minimum pay for certain positions. This is not real scientific because I didn't know that my matches were precisely the same. My job descriptions were precisely the same as theirs, but I tried to be as close as I can. So you see, the regional library here is the bottom, the gray bar, and we are below the average of... from all those other... from the state survey and the School of Government Survey and the Springstead survey. We still... we're still under in terms of average pay for certain positions. So that's sad, and I'd like to change that. I think our folks deserve it. I think the residents of our county deserve people who are being paid a fair salary. The next slide is simply our old pay scale on the left. We had eight different ranges. All 22 of our positions were in those ranges. This is on the right, the proposed pay scale by Springstead, which gives us a wider, larger pay scale and a more controlled one, which actually gives us the chance to give people a little bit of a ladder of opportunity in their career. And I think that's a really nice, kind of a perk that I didn't expect from this survey. These are our jobs put into their pay scale. I think there are 22 different job titles there that they have put into different grades with a new minimum, mid, and maximum pay for those jobs. In doing that, the Springstead said, "Okay, so here's the pay scale you really ought to be using for your folks. Here's the minimum pay on these... for all these jobs that you have." And they suggested three different ways to fund that new pay scale. And this is standard. I think they do this in any of the government organizations that they do a pay scale for. They will say, "This is how you can get there." Now, I will say, for most organizations, they try to get you to the mid-range of their new proposed scale, but because we're so far behind, they said, "Okay, just to get you up to minimum, this is what you might do. You might bring all of those folks who currently are making below what the suggested minimum is up to their minimum. Out of our 63 employees, 54 folks are below their minimum of the new range. So this would... that money would just be enough to get people up to minimum. A second option is to bring everybody up to their minimum, and those few people that are already in the range they need to be in, give them a 2% raise, which is something... which is about what we usually get every year. The third option, which is the one that Springstead suggests, and that the Regional Governing Board has voted to recommend, is this third option, which brings all those folks who were below where they need to be up to where they need to be, and then give an extra half a percent for each year in that position so that you don't have someone who's been in a position for 15 years making the same as someone who got that same kind of job somewhere else the last year. So you get a little bit of longevity recognition in that. And I will mention here that we only have one pay scale for the region. We don't pay folks in Wilkes on a different pay scale than folks from Watauga or from Ash. Everyone is on the same pay scale. And I will also note that our personnel money outside of the region, regional personnel money comes from state aid, comes from county money. That's the only source of personnel money in the region. So what the counties do for us is what we can do for our folks. When you look at the combined cost across the region, you get this, but this doesn't matter because we don't work with one budget. In the region, which is the next page, three of our four employees are already in the scale, so we're not going to get much. This is not a hidden trick to get me a big raise, guys. I'm not going to get much at all, no matter what plan you choose. Ash County, if the counties will agree on the new pay scale and to get us there within whatever number of years, Ash County will need to increase their money by about $108,000 to get folks up to that minimum salary. Watauga County will be paying the most, $127,000. And Wilkes County, using numbers that are year-old, $84,000, but the next slide, I updated it to use our current pay and where we need to be. The difference in where we are and where we need to be in salaries alone is $86,000. About a quarter of that is for part-time people. The rest of it's for full-time because, you know, full-time people cost more. What we're proposing, what we're asking for Ash County and from Watauga County and from you today is that you increase your appropriation so that we can move our current employees to the minimum in that new pay scale, giving that little half a percent increase for years of service, and doing it within three years. If you take much more than three years, you're losing to cost of living. So that's the big ask. Just a couple of notes. The interlocal agreement did say that counties would pay for materials, salaries, and operating expenses, and I will tell you, Wilkes County's appropriation does pay all the salary and all the associated personnel costs for Wilkes County library employees. None of the other two counties appropriation covers all of personnel. You guys did. Thank you very much. No county covers appropriation, covers all of personnel and operations, and no county pays at all for materials. But we really don't expect materials money from our counties, and we're very appreciative of the library buildings that we live in and work out of. You guys give us enough money to pay all our personnel and some of the operating expenses in... for the building, maintenance and repair and that kind of thing. In Ash and Watauga, the buildings are in the county's budget. They just take care of that for us. You give us money, and we take care of it. That's great. Thank you. And again, we don't expect programming money. We get all that from donations. We don't expect materials money, but we would like to ask, and this is a big ask, that you pay salaries, pay all the associated costs, and get our folks up to that minimum pay that's an average, and that's so much more than they're getting now, and that the staff here really, really deserve. They do a good job. If the region dissolved tomorrow... well, couldn't... you have to give us a year. If you dissolve the region in a year, I suspect you would take on library as part of county business, and you would put these folks into your pay scale, and I suspect they'd make a lot more than they're making now. So I'm asking that we... our staff gets paid at a reasonable and fair rate in comparison to other county employees so that we can continue to do what we love to do and that we do so well for you. Thank you.
Yeah, good. That was a great presentation. Very well done. I think that your library degrees skills certainly...
SWOT analysis.
Certainly well there.
Yeah.
No, it was very good. Certainly well there. No, that was very good.
And I'll tell you that.
I'm sure that, that the commissioners probably have a few comments.
Sure, all questions.
So if we, if you will, let's just kind of ask them what they'd like to add and then we'll go from there.
I've got to serve.
Sure, I saw you writing.
Jane, the building maintenance and utilities is all paid by the county, is that right?
No. In Wil- in Ash and Watauga, it's all on the county books. In Wilkes County, we get money and we pay, uh, cleaning and maintenance and repair, although the county has helped in the past couple of years with the, um, HVAC, which is, you know, falling apart. We actually, a good part of that fund balance you see in that slide about, um, about our budget, a good part of that appropriation went to, as a lump sum, to help offset some of that HVAC costs.
Which was, what, a hundred and eighty thousand? It was, it was a lot.
Yeah, and it's still ongoing a little bit.
How old is that building? So I'm sorry, I had, I had.
Twenty, twenty years, twenty years?
Okay.
Well, but the utilities and maintenance, we, we appropriate money for that.
To us, right, and we pay out of our budget, exactly, yes.
I'm just looking at the numbers here. Eighty percent of, of the current revenues comes from the county.
Yes.
Okay, and I'm looking at fines and, uh, fund balance and other grant, gifts and donations. So it looks like you're getting a hundred and fifty-five thousand from somewhere else.
Something.
Roughly, is that right? From the state, federal, fines, county grant, municipal grant?
We are getting about thirty thousand dollars from fines and fees, which goes back into operational. Uh, we are getting about, I'm sorry, twenty, twenty is gifts. I think I got that backward. Um, gifts and donations are from friends in the endowment of about thirty, or twenty, I'm sorry. Thirty from fines and fees, twenty from gifts and donations, um, a couple of small grants, uh, which, that, that money is real restricted to whatever it is you ask for it.
It's roughly a hundred and fifty-five thousand from other places.
Yeah, 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 you're right, exactly.
But some of it you would get anyway if you were in a regional library.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, the fines, the fees, the gifts.
Right, yeah, 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 yeah.
We would get anyhow.
So some of the regional money goes into operational expenses that this money doesn't cover, gets paid out of the state aid budget.
Well, I'm just, my, my question is, why are we better served being a regional library? If it's only, if we're going to get around, well, it looks like to me, maybe, maybe a hundred thousand dollars.
That's, that's actually, that's, you look at the hundred thousand dollars you're seeing is fund balance appropriation. So this doesn't actually show the state aid that we spend because our state aid expenditures are a totally separate budget. So we use state money for our collection.
So you have another budget other than what you're saying?
Yes, this is just local. We have the state aid part of the budget too that covers our continuing expenses for like our copy machines, the maintenance on those pieces of equipment, things like that. It also covers books and DVDs, subscriptions to things like that, periodicals, postage. That all comes out of our state aid budget.
State aid?
Yes.
Which you would get anyway if you were a library, a county library?
We wouldn't, we wouldn't get the same amount. We get extra kickback for being a region.
At what percentage?
Jane, that would be a big.
Um, the region gets three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. What it gets is each of the county's state aid appropriation plus one extra block grant of like seventy-five or ninety thousand dollars. Uh, I couldn't tell you right off the top of my head what your state aid would be if it weren't going into the regional budget because we get that extra.
So you're telling me being a regional, you're getting more money from the state?
Yes.
If you're a county library, you won't get it?
You'll get, you will get a block, you will get a state aid grant. You won't get the extra grant that goes to the region to take care of the region's administrative.
Well, we wouldn't need it if we were a county library. We wouldn't have any regional administration.
No, you would take on personnel. You would take on finances, you would take on IT, and I hope you would take on materials because right now, local money doesn't cover materials at all.
And I'm just asking.
No, that's fine, sure.
But you do have a board member that's approached me with this. Why, why doesn't we not have just a county library?
Yeah.
And put them all into the county plan?
That's, I mean, that's a reasonable question. That's why you guys are here.
For being a regional library, I just would like to know what the citizens of Wilkes County gain from being a regional library. I know that, uh, you guys are pretty pro-regional library and I know you have your reasons.
I kind of have to be.
I'm just, I'm just asking.
Jane's job.
Yeah, yeah.
What benefits do all these folks, you know?
Sure, I think one of the, um, for the average daily user in the library, one of the biggest benefits that we have as a region is our courier service that runs three days a week to Ash and Wilkes County and Ash and Watauga counties. So if you put a book on hold, today's Wednesday and it's early enough in the day when the courier goes up to Watauga County, he can get that book and bring it right back same day for you. Um, so that's for the re- readers that really are going through a lot of materials, for teachers that need something in a hurry. That's one of the biggest services that we have is the courier. And that relationship with the other counties, like Jane mentioned earlier, to be able to pool our resources to buy more materials, especially those electronic materials that are so expensive. Those ebooks are, they're like eighty dollars a book. Um, so it's beneficial to the whole community for us to share that expense. Otherwise, what we could do alone is, is nothing compared to what we could do when it's the three of us together.
Well, you do a great job. I mean, I go over there some and, and you do a great job, especially feeding the kids in the summer and.
In that way.
Some of the, a lot of the unseen things and local restaurants donate food and stuff and commissioner gives you some.
Melons.
Squash or something.
I'm joking.
That's not true. That is absurd.
He does give you some vegetables, I know what you're talking about. I'm just joking. But anyhow, I, I just, there's just some questions I'd like answering that, uh, that's kind of like why we are a regional library today. I could see it fifty years ago, but I, I don't know.
Well, we'd certainly be able to break down, I can't do it in my head right now, but break down the, the state aid budget and show you what you get from that. And again, things like the courier, um, the internet access, which costs us across the region is seventy thousand dollars, is covered by the, uh, state budget and the materials, as Julia has mentioned.
Do you have a, is there a regional office? Is it in the library in Watauga?
It's in the library in, in Ash.
In Ash.
The finance officer has an office there and I have a real office there. And our IT guy just floats around. But if you want more.
I don't know who's got, which of the three counties has the largest budget overall? Is it Wilkes, Watauga or Ash?
Probably Watauga.
You think so?
It's a busy.
Yeah, I didn't.
It's a, you know, it's, it's, it's in Boone.
Well, it's a college town.
Right, it's in Boone, what can you say?
They have two, they have another big library.
They have a small ranch, a small ranch in Sugar Grove, western Watauga, right. So again, if you, you want more numbers about where the state aid goes and how much you might get without the region, I, I'll do it for you.
Jane, my question was if we were a county library, why would we lose state aid? I don't see why.
Oh, you don't. You will get a portion, you will get your, the county state aid.
The courier would be one thing.
You would lose courier, you would lose materials that the state aid budget is now. But, well, you wouldn't because you would have state aid for that. I mean, it.
Sure, Ash would let us borrow a book if it's not guaranteed, yeah.
I'm sure we would. We're all part of the same statewide consortium in terms of that, so, yeah, yeah.
Who, who, the retirement for, for, uh, library employees, is that a state function?
We're in state retirement.
Okay, state retirement.
We're an inter-local governmental agency, so we're in state retirement. We got on the state health plan a couple of years ago that saved us a bundle.
Yeah, that is significant. We did that at High Country Council of Governments.
Which was just wonderful.
Yeah, it was, it was a big.
So, yeah.
It was a big deal. You're, you're right and, you know, I, so it, we'd lose that. I suppose that would change if we went to a county library, wouldn't it?
That would have, the state.
At some point.
That would have to change somehow, um, the insurance.
I would like to see too, the, um, the, a breakdown of the cost for all the benefits too and how much that plays into the.
Sure.
You know, how that compares as well because this is something that we look at when we're talking about compensation and salaries. And in fairness, you can't only compare, uh, uh, public sector employees to other public sector employees. You have to also look at the general economy.
Cost of labor, sure.
And individuals that are employed in the private sector.
Yeah.
And Wilkes County i- is not, you know, a rich county. So it's important that you look at the benefits that are supplied often to public sector workers that private sector workers do not get. Uh, and I don't know how many, what the annual, uh, number of hours that are worked, if it's twenty-two hundred or what, what the. So there, there's more to it than just to look at one number and say, this is not fair.
Sure.
So, and, and we have hundreds of employees.
Yeah.
That, that work for the county. And we have some serious deficiencies in other areas, including things like child protective services, which, I've been a library addict since I was a kid. But I, frankly, I don't go to the library like I used to. Uh, and maybe it's because of my age or my, the nature of my work, but I tend to pick up my iPad i- if I need to reference something more than I used to. I used to go to, uh, bookstores. I was in Barnes and Noble or Borders all the time. And I just find myself not going there as often unless I want to get a couple of Starbucks and, you know, maybe browse some magazines. So I understand that we want to have good quality employees and, and pay them fairly, but I, I think there's some other things we need to have at our disposal.
Sure.
Besides what we've seen today in order to make a determination about how much we can help with this issue that you've got. That, that's my.
Yeah, I had hoped, my first, uh, in, my first preference was to have Springstead compare our, um, salaries to the three counties that we live in. That wasn't cost too much because they were going to have to survey and rank and all this kind of thing. So we went to other libraries that are comparable. But I, I understand what you're saying.
And that's, well, that's a good presentation.
And it's also, yeah, it's complicated because I really need my three counties working together. We have one pay scale. I don't want to pay Ash people more for doing the same job than I'm paying folks here. It's just, uh, we've never done that and I don't want to do that. So now you've got three counties to.
I can reflect back to a few years ago when the recession was, was deeper and tougher. We actually were able to increase the library's budget and Ash and Watauga, I don't believe were able to or were reluctant to. And of course, I got to tease the other commissioners in the two counties that we were ahead of them and increasing the library's budget.
Appropriations are never level, but over the years, you know, it levels out. But this, we're asking for a, a big step up and it needs to be done across the region or I, I don't think we can do it, so.
Anybody?
Yes, sir.
I know, I understand what you're saying, but you know, you wouldn't want Wilkes folks paid more than Ash and Watauga. But do any regional systems or any of their employees in the county system?
Yeah, uh, the regions vary wildly across the state. There are, there are at least a few where the, um, people who work in the library are county employees or are town employees, but the region manages. There are a, at least, I think, two regions where that's the case. Um, and then there are regions like ours where it all comes from, the region pays and the regional employees.
I didn't know if they, they still had a regional supplement plus employees come out of the county system. Some, it makes sense to me.
Who owns the library building?
The county.
The county.
Okay.
In all cases.
I wasn't sure.
Yeah, in all cases.
John.
I meant y'all. We do.
And I think that's probably true in all the regions that the counties or town owns the building.
It's a nice building.
It's a nice building.
We, we had some tremendous private donors to make that happen.
Yeah, yeah, the community loves its library. Still appreciate it.
Nice part of downtown North Wilkesboro.
Yeah.
And I, that's something I, I think it's important to address is the, is the contributions of the two towns. I know they're fairly small. How much do the towns give to the library budget each year? Is it?
North Wilkesboro gives two thousand. Wilkesboro does not give anything.
Okay, and I'm sure just as many Wilkesboro residents probably use the library as North Wilkesboro. They may not walk there, but I'm sure they use it. But, and I've mentioned to the guys because I think I'm the only one who lives in one of the towns. Town residents pay county taxes.
Sure.
You're not exempt from county taxes by living in town. So they are, as taxpayers in the towns, as part of the county, contributing just as much to the library personally as the, as the county employees, so.
You might appeal to Wilkesboro and not even get a.
Yeah, we, we need to chat with them.
I've tried, you're welcome to ask them on my behalf.
I think that would be a good expenditure for them.
Send Ms. Jewett to.
I've tried, they.
I'm sure you have and that's why I made the comments I did.
They donated some fish balls, is what they did.
Their citizens are contributing to the library through county taxes of rather significant amount.
I will say to your earlier point about, um, looking at Wilkes County as in the private sector. Um, and you look at Wilkes County, and I'm not sure what the starting rate is at the car wash. I think it's twelve, I saw a big sign when y'all were hiring, was it twelve-something?
Starting wage.
Yeah, what do you pay your starting workers down there? Somebody was, had a big hiring sign on the strip.
Depends on the person.
You don't have that on their record, but I will say our, yeah. Our, our starting pay is eight oh one.
That's what they pay Keith.
Yeah, no, uh, there was a big sign on the strip. It was one of the new businesses opening up. I thought it was y'all, but it was somebody else and it said, new hires, twelve oh one was their starting wage. And ours is eight oh one.
Twelve, twelve oh one.
Twelve oh one was their starting, and I thought.
Well, I mean, this is a, this is a national discussion now.
Oh, indeed.
This is not about the, the, there, there's wage pressure at every level in every sector of the economy right now, but there's still, there's still resistance to it. So it, it's, it's, it's tough and we, you know, we've got a lot of things to fund. We're, you know.
How long has it been eight oh one?
Excuse me? Oh, the, starting at the library?
Since two thousand eight. That was the last time any adjustment was made and that was just, I believe, a.
You guys set your own pay scale, don't you?
Yes, sir. The governing board runs the, the region and approves that kind of thing.
The, the regional governing.
Yes, the regional governing board, yeah.
And nationally, McDonald's pays ten dollars an hour.
It's, yeah, and we're helping children, you know, learn to read and love to read and helping people find jobs and I, so.
Yeah, it's a great organization. We don't, there's no, no.
And I appreciate the fact that y'all have a limited amount of money and.
Got a great director.
You know, a gazillion people, hands going towards you. But please do give some consideration. We thought it was important enough to put some money into this study and we're talking with all three counties and, um, we'd, we'd appreciate your serious consideration.
We've answered a lot of questions.
Yeah, very good. And it was an excellent presentation, very good. Any other feedback from the board?
I'd like some clarification. You need, you're, you're trying to do this over five years?
Three, I suggested three, but I'm, you know, this negotiable.
What, what percent do you need? You need eighty thousand from Wilkes the first year? What was it?
My mind just went blank. It's not eighty. The total salary increase at the end of three years would be eighty-six thousand dollars.
Eighty-six at, at the end of three.
And of course, we're also asking that the benefits get covered as well, uh, which adds twenty-five, thirty percent.
Okay.
But Jane, we're the only county that covers benefits?
Yes, sir. The other appropriations from Ash and W- Watauga, uh, cover salary, but not all the benefits in the, in the personnel budget. So we sub.
How do they get covered?
Fines and fees. Fines and fees generally will cover the difference.
Looks like, but if we're already covering the benefits, it's like our people make more.
Yeah. And, um, I, and I would, hmm, it's just like anything else. Uh, maybe if you could supplement your internal revenue, and I know we talked about this, whether you sold coffee, whatever you did, but with some kind of user fee, when you get a card and if you paid a couple of bucks, I mean, it wouldn't break anybody up and with forty-some thousand people, you know, it might generate enough revenue to cover, maybe buy more materials or something so that you could take more of your budget and utilize it for something. And I, I don't know whether that's a state policy or if you can't do that, but, but I, I don't see anything wrong with a small user fee.
People already pay their taxes though and they're, they pay their taxes and so they say, I pay taxes for this library.
They have a major revolt.
We, you know, and that's, we try. We've raised the fees, we charge for copies, we started doing fundraising, pay for special programming, so we're, we're trying.
Yeah, I know you are. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, let's see here. It was item F. We'll on to item G. Resolution requesting that NC Highway sixteen north from intersection with US Highway four twenty-one to the intersection with Boone Trail be named in honor of Charlie O. Lovett. John, I'll let you pipe in on this, but I also want to hear from Commissioner Elmore on, on this as well. So either one of you that wants to, however y'all want to. So, either one of you that wants to, however y'all want to handle it.
We do have this resolution request and he, I think, Mr. Elmore would like to read it. I'm turning it over to you.
Big one.
Yes. Yeah, I'll, I'll be glad to read it.
Yeah. Do you want to start with that?
Reserve comments after.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. That's great. Let's do it that way. Perfect.
Resolution requesting, this might take me a long time. It'll take me a long, uh.
Take your time, Keith.
Okay. Resolution requesting that North Carolina Highway sixteen north from intersection of US four twenty-one to the intersection of Boone Trail, Wilkes County, North Carolina, be named in honor of Charlie O. Lovett. Whereas Charlie O. Lovett was born July twentieth nineteen hundred, the ninth of thirteen children to James Nelson and Lily Riggin, Riggs Lovett in Wilkes County, North Carolina, and was a citizen, resident of Wilkes County for the entire, for his entire life. And whereas Charlie O. Lovett learned to grow crops from an early age and from the age of fourteen to eighteen, he spent his summers farming, working as a teamster during the winter. He also worked for RJ Reynolds and in the coal mines of West Virginia from nineteen eighteen to nineteen twenty-three. During the winter, returning to, uh, to farming in Wilkes County during the growing season. And whereas Charlie O. Lovett married Ruth Bumgarner and bought his first truck in nineteen twenty-four to go into pro, uh, to the produce business for himself. He traveled throughout the foothills and the mountains of Wilkes County, uh, Wilkes, buying chicken, eggs, hound and other products to sell at the markets in Winston-Salem and Charlotte. He and Ruth raised seven children, all of whom worked on the farm located on Pleasant Home Church Road and in the business. His produce business provided a farm, uh, market for local farmers to sell their produce to supplement family farm income. From the early nineteen thirties through World War Two, chicken production progressed from barnyard chickens to hot house chickens, providing Lovett and farmers in western Wilkes more chickens to sell. And whereas Charlie O. Lovett's trucks delivered live chickens from Wilkes County to process and plant in major cities along the east coast. At the same time, he continued with his egg and produce business. In nineteen forty-six, he sold the live chicken business to his oldest son, C. Fred Lovett. He continued to run his smaller farm-raised food, produce and trucking business in which he partnered with J.C. Bumgarner to form Lovett Egg Company. Fred Lovett and his father, with his father's help and support, grew his business into what became Holly Farms Poultry Industry, the largest chicken company in the mid-Atlantic states. The other six Lovett children followed their oldest brother and all worked in the commercial chicken business. And whereas Charlie O. Lovett was instrumental in laying the foundation that grew and integrated poultry farming in Wilkes County through Holly Farms and the largest company in the world during the nineteen seventies with products, with operations in North Carolina, Maryland and Texas. This brand became first nas, nationally distributed chicken in the United States. Nineteen, in nineteen eighty-nine, Holly Farms was acquired by Tyson and today the poultry, the chicken business generates more than three hundred million dollars in gross annual revenue, employs three thousand three hundred people, supports two hundred family farms in Wilkes County. And whereas Charlie O. Lovett was leader in Wilkes, uh, in Miller's Creek area and helped secure new Highway sixteen, which links Boone Trail to the US Highway four twenty-one. And whereas, Wilkes County Board of Commissioners desire to honor the life and achievements of Charlie O. Lovett and expressed the appreciation of the county and its citizens for the service he has rendered the community, state and nation by officially requesting North Carolina Highway sixteen north from the intersection with US Highway four twenty-one to the intersection with Boone Trail in Wilkes County and North Carolina be named the C.O. Lovett Highway in his honor. Now, therefore, on behalf of Wilkes County, uh, the Wilkes County Board of Commissioners do hereby adopt this resolution in honor of Charlie O. Lovett and in support of its official request that North Carolina Highway sixteen north from the intersection, US four twenty-one, to the intersection of Boone Trail in Wilkes County, North Carolina, be named the C.O. Lovett Highway in his honor. Adopted by the Wilkes County Board in regular session, assembled this third day of April twenty-eighteen.
Keith, would you please make a motion to adopt that resolution? I'll get a second.
Yeah, I'd be glad. Uh, I've, I've had the fortune of working, knowing the children of C.O. and, uh, been, been working with the Lovett family, for the Lovett family. At, at Bumgarner's also, matter of fact, with Lovett family.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, they, they had a huge impact. They, they were instrumental in Junior getting started, Junior Johnson there in NASCAR. They supported this track. So, they've done a lot of, lot of things, as you can attest. You can go out through the county and you can see it and smell it and it's tasty. Good, good things for Wilkes County. But anyway, I'd like to make that motion.
Yeah, good. Is, um, is there a second for that motion from the board?
I'd say.
Okay, got a second? Any further, any further discussion or question?
Is J.C. Bumgarner, is that Terry's dad?
Yes, it is. Yes, yeah.
So, it, it did, uh, you know, we, we talked economic development, how, how we, uh, Wilkes has a lot of entrepreneurship in this county.
Oh, yeah.
It's, most everything we've got started right here.
Lord.
Everything was grown from within and that's, that's what our economic development team's doing now, which we're working hard to grow it from within.
They was instrumental in helping, uh.
The ham business.
Hope's Ham, they started over. So, I mean, you know.
It all ties together.
It really does.
J.C. was an interesting fellow.
Yeah.
Very colorful.
And Terry's still got a tremendous business over here on fifteen.
Okay, great. We've got a motion and a second. Does anybody want to make any additional comments or questions or anything? A hearing none. All those in favor of approving the resolution, please raise your hands. Motion carries. Okay, our famous tax department. Uh, our tax administrator, Mr. Alex Hamilton is here today to, uh, ask us to do something. The floor is yours, Alex.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mister Chairman, members of the board, I'm here to request permission to make the releases that you have in front of you. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions, gentlemen? If not, I would entertain a motion. Motion to approve the release. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Alex, is item six Jimmy Christmas, is that his name? I just.
I saw that too.
I, well, you don't even have to answer it. Don't worry about it.
Jimmy and December Christmas.
I don't know. I just got him this morning.
All right, Tony, you, I'm sure you know the story, story on that one.
Sounds good.
Tony, you could have cut them a little slack. Oh, boy.
Be saying it.
Just, just doing his job. We got another item for Alex. The appointments to the Wilkes County Board of Equalization and Review.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mister Chairman, the Board of Commissioners passed a resolution back in two thousand and one that established a special Board of Equalization Review as allowed by North Carolina General Statute one of five, three twenty-two. It's a time, it is time to appoint the board members for the two thousand eighteen tax year. Mister Chairman yourself and Steve Priceel, Carmen James, Andrew Casey and Janie Cheek have agreed to serve this year if that is the board's desire. And I appreciate your consideration.
Okay.
And they have filled out the.
Yeah, we've got all, yeah, all of their applications are right here with no change forms, which makes it a little easier. The, uh, do you anticipate a number of meetings this year or, I, I don't think so.
So far, we just, I believe we just have a couple.
Okay.
So, I'm, I'm thinking we'll probably, uh, I'm just thinking maybe the thirteenth or, or maybe the meeting. We usually typically do them on Thursday nights and that's worked well for us.
Yeah.
So, um, actually, it's the Thursday before Merle Fest is when I thought we'd.
Yeah, I can ask.
The what?
The nineteenth.
The nineteenth, yes. And probably adjourned sometime first of May.
What, what's the pleasure of the board on this? Are you guys okay with this board, with these board appointments?
Two, two-year appointment, right.
Is it two years or just one year?
One year.
Yeah, I think we do this every year.
Yeah.
And we've made some changes over the years.
Right.
We've had some people drop off and we've added some.
The new values will hit next, not next year, but.
Yes, we'll probably have a more than one meeting next year. You, you will notice an increase in my budget.
No, one year's gonna be enough. You're out of order, Commissioner Elmore.
You know, based on the last revaluation, they really, it wasn't that bad.
These meetings go fairly smoothly.
Right.
We've had, um, and that's, I'm, I'm gonna give Alex some credit. They do a lot of work beforehand to get this ready and we've got the numbers and comparisons and it usually goes relatively smoothly. We've had very few issues or.
Yeah, I've got, you know, good people that work with me and.
People, obviously, people get emotional about their taxes.
Yeah, they do.
And that's to be expected.
And we're, and we're, we do make mistakes, so.
I bet Eddie does. You probably get emotional about your taxes, don't you?
I cry every time.
It's, just remember, it's better than death.
I'd make a motion to approve the board equalization review.
Good, thank you. Second? Got a second from Commissioner Minton? Any discussion, all in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, have a great day.
Good to you.
Yep. Item I, Blue Ridge Opportunity Commission, Wilkes County Aging Advisory Committee, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, our appointments. Jennifer Cooper, who's Program Director, Senior Nutrition Services, is here. Good morning.
Good morning.
Jennifer, welcome.
Thank you.
Glad you're here.
Thank you.
Uh, you got a pretty big list of folks on the council. What, what do they do?
We meet one time per year and we review the service needs and gaps in the county and most importantly, we approve the allocations for the Home and Community Care Block Grant for the three aging agencies.
Do, are there other agencies that, that have asked for money other than those three or are those the three?
Um, before my time, to my knowledge, it was, um, Senior Nutrition, which used to be Elderly Nutrition and, um, the Senior Center. And then when Ruby Purdue came into being, I believe that was when the request was made to have some funding.
Yeah.
And so, that allocation was made. Other than that, I, I've, I've never heard anyone else say that there was anyone else requesting funds from that grant.
And Keith, you're on this?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
And I apologize for the late addition. I started on this in January and it never fails. We had a couple of people who had served on the committee for quite a few years, but at the last minute, had some personal things come up and notified me that they were no longer going to serve. So, we did scramble a little bit there at the end to, to get folks to agree to serve on that one, that one meeting.
When does that meeting occur?
Uh, that meeting is Friday.
Okay, so, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
And, and we are trying to bring in folks that are, are, um, younger, that have a, a broader range in the community, our home health folks, our, um, nursing facility folks and that type of thing. So, I think that that's important, that we start bringing in some different folks onto that committee.
Good. This is, uh, a lot of great names on there. We've got, all of their forms have been submitted and checked and double-checked and all that stuff. And I thank our clerk, of course, for that. She's best in the state.
She has earned her.
By far and away.
Her.
Yeah, she has.
Yeah, Jennifer worked really closely.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, she's tired of me. I'm gonna leave her alone for another year, maybe.
Keith, would you like to recommend this board, these board appointments?
I'd make that motion.
Okay, second? Is there a second? Anybody want to second this? Greg, Commissioner Minton? Uh, any discussion, all in favor, please raise your hands. Good luck with your meeting Friday.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Keith, don't forget. I'll see you in, I'll see you in email.
He has to remember before he can forget.
Where is it?
Well, let's see. Item J, Department of Social Services. We've got two items, a budget amendment, which will require some action. We'll do that first, John. And then we'll follow that with your regular update, which we utilize as our, kind of our monthly meeting with DSS to make sure that we're overseeing everything properly.
Okay.
Good to see. And I want to thank John publicly for accompanying John and I to a very large conference and task force workshop on children's welfare in Greensboro last week. I was glad to have him there and, and proud to be with you guys.
It was very good.
Yeah, it was. It was well done.
Chairman Blevins was, uh, in Chaminale Park, getting it started across the state as well.
Yeah, it's an important topic, to say the least. Yeah.
Definitely. The budget amendment request you have before you there is just adult daycare funds. Money that we got that wasn't originally included in the budget estimates. The one eighty-four local match is paid for by the Ruby Purdue Blackburn Adult Daycare. So, there's no county money involved in this at all. It's just allowing it to get into our budget so that we could expend those funds that came into the county.
Okay. My, how about a motion to approve this budget amendment number one? Motion, second from Commissioner Gamble. Any discussion, all in favor? Okay, that budget amendment passes. Good, now we can go into our regular report. John?
All righty. Before we get started with the numbers, I wanted to kind of give you a couple of little updates. Number one, I had another employee to resign last, late last week. We're up to three openings in our social workers now. Two of them resigned due to the stress of the job. They, the job's getting so stressful that it's hard for them to do and they wanted to go to something else. And the other one went to work for Catawba County, obviously, as financial reasons and that. I probably will have a fourth opening coming up because one of our services supervisors is retiring and we have some internal applicants and we'll fill that from within.
The, the employee that went to Watauga, where, where do they live? Where they reside?
Catawba, I'm sorry.
Catawba.
Catawba County.
Yeah, Catawba, yeah.
Where, where they reside?
Where they live, she is renting an apartment here in the county at the moment, but then she's gonna.
She is commuting.
She's gonna do that until her lease is up and then she's gonna move to Catawba.
And, uh, there's a fairly significant difference in the, in the pay here. You know, we're talking about the library and that being an issue, but here we've got the same. This is basically.
There is.
Evolves around some of the same issues, doesn't it?
Very much so, yes.
Several thousand dollars difference?
Can be, yes.
Yeah, okay.
For this county.
Thank you, Dan.
What I wanted to tell you too, before we get in that, is just a little, kind of an update on the Social Services Working Group. Commissioner Minton probably knows some of this as well that's going on. That work is divided into two stages. This working group has a DSS director on it, attorney on it, county commissioner on it. They're studying, um, different aspects of social services and their first report's gonna be sent to the legislature on April the tenth. And it's mainly looking at making improvements in the state-supervised, county-administered system and how the North Carolina Department of Social Services or Human Services can better support counties through an administration of, uh, regional offices. Not regionalization for county offices, but regional offices and provide better oversight to them. What they're looking at and what they're giving to legislatures this first go-round on, uh, April tenth, they've looked at these different areas and I'll read off to you and they're looking at it from an aspect of what is the central's responsibility? Central meaning Raleigh, DHHS. What is the regional responsibility for these, you know, like one of the regional offices where they're gonna split the state up into maybe five or seven regions? And what are the local responsibilities? Some of the things they're looking at is best practice. looking at is best practice dissemination. In other words, trying to get like a regional office to get counties talking to each other. If somebody does it better than the other one, they can kind of share ideas. Compliance monitoring, we're monitored to death.
Yeah, you need more of that, I know.
Here's more monitoring for us. Physical monitoring. They're gonna look at our physical monitoring, which, you know, we get audited, you know, obviously, you know, through our own audits and the state audits with physical monitoring. We always done very well with those. Integrated data systems, which that's very good. That would be, you know, we're the, um, kind of haphazard right now. You know, rich counties, wealthy counties, they'll have all kinds of data information systems. The small little counties, they just have basically what the state gives them. So kind of working toward an integrated data system. Inter-agency coordination, that would be really good because of the fact that, you know, a lot of times we'll have a report that'll come into our county. It could be a conflict that we can't handle. We have to ask another county to do that, and we have to find people to cooperate and work with us on that. Policy guidance and technical assistance. That would be good for us in all counties. A lot of times, we'll call the state office, and many times, they don't like to go out on a limb sometimes to give you an answer. So if, you know, we get a little more guidance and clarity in policy, that would be very good. Quality improvement, that's a big thing with the state now, wanting all counties to, you know, basically bring up their quality. Staffing standards and support, that's a biggie. That one would be one where the state might, you know, they are, they obviously already have caseload standards for foster care and CPS, but that could go into, you know, income maintenance and different areas. And then a follow-up to make sure the counties are properly staffed as well. And training as well, that's another aspect of this first working group stage that they're gonna give out. They're gonna have another part to it that they're gonna start in May, and that one's gonna look at information sharing across counties, conflict of interest, and inter-agency agreements. But in addition to that, it's gonna develop a vision for transitioning the state from a county-administered system to a regionally administered system. But now, I will make a recommendation on that, and that's talking about where counties could go together or come together.
Yeah.
Let me, can I ask a question?
Anytime. I just, just, just go ahead and back down anytime.
Talking about the regionalizing of the systems, you know, we, we lost a person over here, too. Will that eliminate, you think that would eliminate losing people to Catawba? Uh, and will they come up with a, instead of each county setting a pace scale, would it be a regional scale where we wouldn't have?
This first regionalization, and Commissioner Minton probably knows as much more as I do about it, will not be that type of, it's gonna be more of monitoring us, looking over us, support for us, that type of thing. It's not gonna be trying to get counties all on a level playing field in terms of pay or anything like that.
So it's not, that's not gonna be...
Not that part of it.
It's not gonna be federalized.
To begin with.
Do you know what counties we're gonna be with?
But it could.
Would be a good thing.
Do you know which counties are in our region?
They've got two different maps right now, and they're, one of them's rather large.
It's, it's extensive.
Yeah.
And it covers metro areas that I feel, and a lot of people feel, that it will pull resources where we're already strained to other areas.
It very well could.
And once again, it's still up in the air with the regionalization project. And with the two maps that they're pretty much locked in on, there's pros and cons to both, mostly cons, the way I look at it.
Oh, yeah.
The directors are still pretty much adamant. I believe this is a, correct me if I'm wrong, they don't want it.
No.
Because the directors, in their collective opinion, state that they're the best ones that can decide where the resources need to be placed within that own county. The counties that are embracing regionalization are your larger ones, for a large extent, because they can pull resources from other counties that may be overfunded or overmanned. That was one of the issues that was brought up at the last association.
So, so this is the state DSS Association you serve at?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, okay.
But you have a very powerful senator lady from Raleigh that wants this regionalized.
Yes, yes.
And she's pushing for it. And if it's gonna start, it's just a start, because once she gets that foot in the door...
Yep. That's...
And once again, it was designed with very great intentions to standardize CPS services statewide. And that was the initial catalyst behind it. However, that beast has grown out of the pot, and it is, and right now, they're in pilot projects in looking at the support angle, but when you get the regionalization offices mandated and funded, it's only a very short skip over the brook to have it an unfunded thing.
That's right.
John, I don't know whether it was a news release or something from the association, but now they've hired. Did, I, did you see that? They've actually hired, hired the company now that's gonna oversee the regional management services. I wasn't familiar with the name, but...
Well, what they've done...
I think that's done, isn't it?
Well, they've hired a company, a consulting group, because you've got kind of two or three different things going on here. It's kind of, it gets confusing. You've got this Social Services Working Groups working on this. Then in addition to that, the 2017 legislation also had a system reform plan, and they've hired a vendor, the Center for the Support of Families.
Right.
Is this vendor that's come out that they've hired. And basically, what they're gonna do is they're gonna review all of the social services programs. They've already reached out to the directors. We're gonna have to submit surveys back to them. They're in the information gathering stage now. But one of the things they're gonna do is develop a dashboard where the people can go into this, and citizens, commissioners, other agencies, and they can see, hopefully, what they're wanting to make is very accountable and transparent of what the agencies are doing. So that's this group work. Then, in addition to that, we've got our written agreements that we're gonna have to sign. They're gonna come out in this fiscal year, 18, 19, and they're gonna be focusing on performance, our performance, how we do, and our administrative responsibilities for that. So you've got this, um, this vendor that's gonna be analyzing this, and you've got our written agreements. Then there's a corrective action part to those written agreements, which I've told you in the past about, beginning in March of 2020. Basically, if a, a social services agency does not meet the requirements of their written agreements, they have to go into a corrective action plan. If they fail the corrective action plan, at that point in time, they can, DHHS, assume control over the agency for the area that they have not passed.
That model came from DPI.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And, and they send the county a bill for it.
Yep.
Yes, the county will pay for it.
Yes.
And then you've got the regional departments, which in March of 2019, counties can voluntarily go in, reach, if they choose to do so. So in other words, a lot of changes to the legislature that's gonna be coming to the social services agencies in the next couple of years. A lot more oversight, a lot more, and which some of it is, I mean, not bad that, you know, because Commissioner Minton said earlier, it would be good to be more standardized across the state in terms of CPS and different things along those lines. But it's, there's so many changes, and then, as I just told you, I've got three or four workers leaving because of the stress of the job. It all works together. It's very difficult for them right now. So I'll keep you informed, and I'm sure Commissioner Minton can keep you all informed as well, because he's in on that with the work groups as well.
And we've got, I think we've got four commissioners on the, on that board, on that, the oversight board or the, the review board, whatever you call it.
There's 18 on that social services working group.
Four of them are county commissioners.
Eighteen total. Well, there's county commissioners on it, but there's 18 total members on it.
So the counties are at least represented?
Yes.
They've got, there's four of them.
And Kevin from Yakon.
Yeah, and, and our president.
gave a presentation.
Our president's on it, and so we've got some strong people.
So that's good, you know.
Paige will now, Cherokee.
Oh, he's very familiar with the issues. He, yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah. Good, okay, so we go ahead and do our monthly report.
All righty, we'll get into our numbers.
Good information, John.
As you can see, in February, these are for February 2018, Adult Medicaid, we had 6,718 cases. The Family Medicaid, 8,284 cases. Our Medicaid Transportation is 1,843 with about $5,400 expenditure. That has kind of balanced out now. It's kind of stabilized. Food nutrition, 5,119 with about $1.3 million in services provided. Forty-three cases in the LEAP-SIP program. That has wound down. We're out of funds now, and we expended $10,000 in February. Daycare, 298 in daycare. As you can see, that's about 14 more than in January, so that has gone up. The expenditure's 132,000. Work first, 232 cases, and the child support, 3,376 cases. APS services, we had 54 APS services. As you can see, the APS investigations jumped up dramatically from last month, from 19, it went up to 30. They had a busy month. CPS case management, there was 55 CPS investigations. That was up from last month as well with 76. We had 105 CPS intake reports. That was a large jump as well. So both our APS and our CPS units were very busy in the month of February. CPS foster care, 235 cases in February with $227,000 expenditure and 295 CPS adoption cases.
John, but you know, it's up from, from January, but CPS investigations are dramatically down from a year ago.
From a year ago. They were, it was 160.
From 160 to 76.
Yep. That number bounces around quite a bit, as you can tell from month to month, but there's no rhyme or reason to it sometimes, except a lot of times, school getting out. You can bet count on that. It's gonna go up then. The rest of it is hard to imagine. Sometimes we had a, there is something to, people say, anybody that works in social services knows there's something to this. We had a double full moon one month, and it wore us out. I don't know why, but it, it will wear you out.
And I noticed in the paper, they had a, a pretty large drug case where there was, was it 53 cases? I don't know if there's children sometimes involved in that kind of situation.
Can be.
And that could bump your numbers up on your, on your, what is that? What's the difference between an intake report and a investigation?
Well, investigations, once it's been accepted, and they're gone out, and start the investigation in the case. Intake reports is somebody calling in, making a report.
Okay, all right, okay. Thank you.
I would have a question.
Sure.
On the heat assistance, do y'all get any heat assistance money through the cold months? I know...
Yes.
Where is that, what line item would that fall on?
All that, all that's in that LEAP and SIP program. All the heating and cooling is all through those line items right there.
And how much money do we usually get in for that unit?
About, the LEAP and SIP, about 230-some thousand each, somewhere around in there. About 230 for those two. Yes. Now, the SIP can be used starting in July all the way through the fiscal year. The LEAP is that program that's compressed and starts like, you know, in December for a certain amount of people, and then in January, it opens up to everyone.
What do those stand for, again, there's?
Low-income energy assistance programs.
Okay.
And the crisis intervention.
Crisis intervention, I thought that was crisis intervention. And so far, you spent $590,000 this year?
Yeah.
Since, but for the fiscal year?
Yes.
Right?
Uh, the LEAP and SIP, let me get my eyes on it.
Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So that, that's for crisis and for assistance?
Yeah, and we got a little extra money, too, through the year.
590,000?
That's all.
Yeah.
That come into our county. That's no county money involved in that at all. That's money coming directly into our county.
Does that amount change for extended, like, more harsh winter, I guess?
They just give us a set amount at the beginning of the year, and then we have to determine if someone's eligible or not through the year for it. All righty. If you want to look at the foster care financial report, as you can see, in the month of February, 227,000 was expended, well with under budget, just spent 46.57% of our budget. So we're doing very well with the foster care adoption. Adoption's the same way. We expended $34,079, about 50% of the budget, so excellent shape with that as well. Sub-sized childcare.
John, the, the budget you spent, that, that, what happens if you underspend at the end of the fiscal year? Is that...
On the foster care?
Yes. Is that county money? So it just, it's just money we don't spend that we budgeted?
Mm-huh.
Yeah. And we always need to recognize that you've been performing at a high level on not overspending, because we have had that issue in the past.
Commissioner Shetland was sitting right there.
He was.
I remember that day rather well.
Tough day, John.
Sorry, John.
No, but really, I mean, you, you certainly must have been listening.
Oh, yeah. I told you. I said, I didn't want to ever have that conversation.
But you're doing great. I mean, that's strong fiscal responsibility.
Yes, it is.
To the, for the taxpayers. Yes, very strong.
Thank you. I appreciate it. As you can see, you know, the, the amount went up for the sub-sized childcare. We have 138 on the waiting list, and in the month of March, we did 24 more vouchers. So they are taking them off the waiting list, and they are putting people on. So we're doing very well with that. We look at the foster care monthly report. Our home studies insist were 13. Our TPR and alincidence were, had two. We had one VPA agreement. Forty-three adoption cases, 11 children on the waiting list, three completed adoptions, 295 adoption assistance cases, and two unlicensed homes. The number of foster homes in Wilkes County was 30. Number of foster home applications received was two. We had number of foster homes licensed this month was one. And Commissioner Gamble, you're too young to understand this, but the model approach to partnerships for parenting, you could have put a gun to my head last month and asked me what that stood for, and I knew it, but I couldn't tell you. Now, when you get over 50, you're gonna understand how that can happen sometimes.
You got that right.
When you get over 60, it's worse.
So that just kind of just flew out of my head that day, but there was four during that month.
It's actually a good thing that you have three adoptions and losing a foster. You know, usually that reflects that number. You come up here about 20, 27, usually it's...
It does, doesn't it?
It really does.
Yep. Total number of active foster cases was 249. We had three monitoring cases, 12 VPAs, so total number in custody's 235. In the funding part, we have 135 of them are 4E, 84 are state, 15 were not determined, 12 are VPAs, and three were monitoring. We have 155 licensed placements, 79 are in our county and 76 out. Thank goodness, that number kind of finally flipped. Fifty-six kinship relative placements, 12 trial placements, one runaway, nine hospitalizations, and 198 children on limbs. And the last thing you have there, I just wanted to mention that to everyone. The silent march for pinwheels, April is Child Abuse Prevention Month. On Sunday, April 8th, from 2:00 to 3:00, there's gonna be a march that'll start at the Carolina West Community Commons, and it'll go to the, our house on Main Street in Wilkesboro. Hope that everyone would come out and plant a pinwheel. It's a month that we all need to be recognized. It's very important that a community is aware that, you know, many of our children are suffering, and it needs to be awareness out there, so.
We've got it on the calendar.
All right.
Great. Any more comments or questions for John before he says goodbye? John, great job. We really appreciate what you do. It's an important part of the county, what the county does.
I appreciate you all. You're very supportive of the agency, and Commissioner Minton, you're involved in things at the state and knowledgeable of it and everything. It helps us quite a bit. Thank you.
Very good. Does, does any, let's see. Okay, does anybody have any old business, other than Vice Chairman Shetland?
I'm good.
Okay, anybody? Any new business? They got any new business? Tony, I think we do have a couple of just small items that we need to talk about in closed session. Would you like to word a motion for us, please?
...in a closed session, consultant for boards of county protecting...
Motion. Second. Second. All in favor? Motion carries. We're going into closed session.